This conference will now be recorded.
Time being 4:47, we'll like to call the meeting of April 6, 2023 to order. The first order of business will either call pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the review of the minutes of 3:30. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings of March 30, 2023. The minutes, excuse me.
Second that, Scanlon.
I have a question. Maybe I missed it, but on page three.
Okay.
Just about, well, above selectmen's reports and above where it says other, discussion of changing boundaries of a privately owned lot, obtaining access through that lot and designating spaces for overnight parking for certain apartments. I think I missed that.
That was in part of the discussion when I was talking about the the old Prividian Bank parking. And it butted up with where the big tree was that they wanted to cut down. And I said, well, could we come in, maybe talk and negotiate with the owners and maybe move that parking lot boundaries back? Lease lease or buy that property and move that back and designate that property to.
It probably should say discussion of possibility of purchasing. I mean, I mean, it sounds like we're just going to change the boundaries of a privately owned lot. You see what I'm saying? I think this either just leave it out or add more information that shows.
Right, well, if we took the brief, the paragraph above that, two paragraphs above it, brief discussion of parking lot along Academy Street. Kevin asked for a map and drawing example of his proposed areas. And that wasn't included in that. And then we went into the. Yeah, no, that, hold on a minute. So it should say discussion of changing the boundaries of.
I think we should say right off the bat, the possibility of purchasing or leasing.
Right, possibility, correct.
Well, even if we leased it, we wouldn't be changing the boundaries of it. We'd have to buy it, but you see what I mean?
There was a discussion about prior to that about, go ahead, Jeannie.
Is it on? Yeah, so you didn't talk about the, you didn't say anything about the possibility of purchasing or leasing. What you said was reaching out to the owners to have the discussion. And I think that's what's missing here. Right? Because we didn't talk about leasing or purchasing. The piece that's missing is that we're not, we're going to talk to the owners to see if they're willing to work with us.
Right.
About purchasing or leasing it.
Well, no, because we never talked about purchasing or.
That may or may not be in the discussion.
Okay.
Right.
Well, at any rate, it just.
Right, so we could put, we could add that in. That's a good catch, yeah. Anybody else have anything? Want to amend the motion to? As amended.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes as suggested of March 30, 2023.
Second.
A motion is made and seconded. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? No, no one.
So do you want to make a motion? Because you have a motion to accept the minutes as amended now. We still have that on the table. We had a motion to
Accept the minutes.
Accept the minutes on the table. And then we made a motion to amend them. We accepted the amendments, so now we have to go back and accept as.
Now, these are the corrected minutes. So we'll make a motion to accept the corrected minutes.
Second.
As, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John. Okay, at this time, sorry Nate, you're here, but we're going right into a non-public. We'll be back around six. Okay. The time being.
I'm sorry, do you want, you can accept that donation.
Yep. We're going to accept the donation from the Tilton Northfield Fraternal Associations for Riverfront Park for $100. Thank you to the fraternal association. Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, time being 4:54. Make a motion to enter into non-public session per RSA 91A:32, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or unless the employee affected has the right to a public meeting and request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. And RSA 91A:3C, which matters, which discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any purpose other than a member of this board, unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend into include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine or levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. And RSA 91A:32, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally, to one or more members of the public body, even when legal counsel is not present. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Scott. Roll call vote, start with you, Catherine.
I have a question before I vote. So is this, is this a non-public or attorney-client privileged?
Non-public.
Dawson, yes.
Jessamine?
Yes.
Buggles?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Constantino, yes. Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Under my topic of discussion.
Okay, yeah. Are we back in public? I make a motion to seal the minutes of the April 6, 2023, non-public because the disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board.
Second.
Permanent?
Permanently.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Hi Nate.
Got to love lawyers.
All right, we're on selectmen's reports. Oh, he's in the bathroom, we'll wait for him.
Ching, ching.
By the word.
And it's after four. Ching, 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 ching.
Okay, we have selectmen's reports. I'm going to go last, so Scott, you're up.
I actually, I have, I don't have anything this week. Again. So I'm good, I will cede my time.
All right, Joe, you're.
Yeah, just that I've reached out again about the concerts. I haven't heard anything back. My major, I didn't like put them on the spot, but I did say that it's, ah, spring has sprung and, you know, thinking about those concerts, where exactly do we go from here? And if he doesn't, well, I have to imagine he's going to get back to us. Because if he doesn't, and in a more or less timely manner, we have to decide whether to go forward. What does that look like? I know that the Tilt School has graciously offered the use of their amphitheater again this year. But as far as booking bands and, you know, that kind, and I'm all about the food, so that's good. But we still have to put the bands together and they need donations to cover. So I mean, we have some money that we would have donated to the concert area.
It wasn't budgeted this year.
All right, me?
That was not budgeted this year.
Concerts weren't?
I don't believe so.
I think we did.
I think we did. Yeah.
I'm, I'm real sure of it. But be that as it may. I'm, I'm trying to find out where we go from here. And I'm going to keep reaching out and I don't know, there's got to be a cutoff if we're going to start the first weekend in June, where we have to take it up or shut it down. I think. And John, you didn't sign this one, and I'm not sure if you missed.
If you look under veterans, you also applied for veterans.
That's, that's a different one.
Oh. I missed one.
Yeah, this is, that's, because that one, I saw that outside over here.
Yep, it was.
That's true. It says no veteran actually lives there.
Okay, Joe, so that you're all set with yours?
That's, that's my thing, yeah.
Okay. Catherine, what do you have for tonight?
Oh, I just thought we'd talk about nine mechanic street. You've all seen the picture. It doesn't really do it justice unless you visit it in person. As health officer, I did sign the notice to vacate and then I wasn't involved in everything that took place after that. The original notice to vacate that I posted, I think in 2020, when the former code enforcement officer was here. The plan was that it would, because the health officer couldn't do that very quickly, I posted it and then that office would deal with the property, which is more appropriate. But now with the current situation there, being out of loop of what took place after the notice to vacate was filed, I'm not sure if land use is handling and how it's being handled. It's not being handled by the health officer. However, having said that, I think the way to proceed is to use the nuisance law 147, which is allows us to, I mean, there's, there's a very rigid process you go through of notification, et cetera, et cetera. But in the outcome, if it's not cleaned up, we pay to have it cleaned up, whether that's through Public Works or private entity. They have to pay for it. If they don't, you take the property as you, you collect it as you would taxes.
It's in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. We have multiple discussions on it in non-public.
Okay.
So we can, you can either talk with Gail or Jeannie and get an update. No, I'm sorry, not Gail, but Jeannie with the non-public.
Well, I, I'm just throwing that out there for this current situation.
Yeah. Because there's, there was a situation about three or four weeks ago that we dealt with, with that situation.
Okay.
All right.
Then I don't need to worry about it.
Okay.
It's being handled, so I'm all right.
It's in process.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I, I didn't send it to you for any action. I sent it to the board because it's been an ongoing conversation and I just wanted you to all see what I saw the other day when I went by. That's all.
Yep.
Well, as a health officer, I'm just concerned about it because.
Got it.
There's a lot more coming on.
Right.
Than just trash.
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
John?
I'm all set.
All set, really?
Yes.
Okay. You're really making me look good. Okay, so the winter parking ban still is in effect until April 15th from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. No parking on any street. Vehicles will be towed, towed at the owner's expense. The executive committee for the senior center met on Monday, the 27th. There is a fundraiser. This is going out to the public, everybody here, please. There's a fundraiser on April 15th to support the Watson family. As you know, Jack Watson just passed away a couple of days ago, a week ago. And the Gray family is putting this fundraiser on to help support the family. And none other than our selectmen, Jessamine, is cooking.
It ain't hamburgers, but I'll manage.
So April 15th from four to seven. This is a resident of Tilton and the family could use our support. So if everybody, it's four to seven and it's April 15th.
What day is that?
Saturday. And in, shoot, I had one more for non-public, but I didn't say. Say it. If we have time, we can do that later. Okay. All right, town administrator's report.
Under my action items, you, in your to be signed file was the appointment letter for Leanne Moynihan and Kevin DeValle to the Transportation Advisory Committee. Their new term would expire in May of 2025, so. Hartwell Concert Series, Kate Saunders head of school, called and asked if the town would like to hold the concerts at the amphitheater again this summer. She is offering that up to the town. So I assume that would be yes.
Yes, please.
Let's line it up at least.
Tilton Old Home Day Committee would like the board's nomination for Citizen of the Year. I did provide you with the guidelines and they would like to have that before the end of April. So maybe by your next.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Everybody think of something, someone?
The next item is the follow-up with the board of the policy and the process for using Town Hall for outside groups. Wanted to check with the board to see what you have or what you would like for criteria for that policy. I did let John Cirillo know that the board was okay with him using the building, the, I believe it's the 13th of May from 10 to 12. And I mentioned this to Chairman Constantino before. When they did the assessment on Town Hall, they did some deed work as well or research some things. And I brought this to her attention. They, it, it actually says the, in the deed that the Town Hall shall be at the discretion of the selectmen of the town of Tilton or a majority of them, except as heretofore stated and for meetings intended for public town business and let or rented for political gatherings. And no particular, no particularly shall be shown to either political party, Democrats or Republicans, but both parties fairly treated. And if necessary, each party shall have alternative days or nights in its occupancy. And for other gatherings or meeting, the hall shall be let or rented as appears to be in the best interest of the town by the selectmen or a majority of them. So when you think about putting the policy together for use of Town Hall.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to do that tonight, come up with criteria so I can put something together. If you want to think about it, come at it at the next meeting.
I'd rather consider it and do it at the next meeting.
Agreed.
Yes?
Yes.
Follow-up on the parking lot. Kevin DeValle had proposed a plan to create more parking spaces. Feedback from the Conservation Commission appeared not to support his plan. And I just wanted to go back to Kevin and advise him one way or the other if he should move forward with the plan or just, you know, not move forward with that, trying to, trying to make those parking spaces.
John?
I think it was feasibility of fitting them in over there and.
Yeah, he had felt like he could do it, but so he just needs direction.
Wasn't he going to make a map?
Yes, but.
Hard to visualize when you're just talking about it. Although I'm not real in favor of taking the trees down.
Want to entertain with the public? Okay, Chuck?
Yeah, the only comment that was made from the Conservation Commission was relative to the one that was adjacent to the old post office. We didn't comment on anything else.
We need a map.
Yeah, so I would say go forward, make the map and we still want to go forward, right? That's the consensus I'm hearing.
Go forward, make a map.
Make forward, right.
Send the map to the Conservation Commission.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Land use.
I did, you did, we did talk earlier about the staff training that is scheduled for April 27th. Morrison Avenue survey work will begin this week.
Are they coming up with any issues as to houses being on in, in the road or anything like that?
He just started the work, so I haven't heard anything back. The work actually is done on the, the roof. He, Melanson reported back that he had patched 14 items, mostly holes and a few flashing voids, also sealed joint at the edge of the metal. He did send along pictures. You recall when the, when we got these quotes, it was for a short term and a long term. And Melanson was, I believe, the contractor that the board had wanted to move forward with on the short term and the long term, although the long-term piece of it was put off. So I just asked him to comment on what he, you know, what the kind of the roof looked like. And he said, it's old and at the end of its life, the issues will continue to come up like holes and voids and flashing, actual patches and repairs. We won't be an issue. It will be, the remainder of the roof will continue aging and failing, creating new issues. It's hard to exactly say how many years the roof has left. Said the chimney needs to be repaired and there, the access stairs need to be repaired. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. You recall, I think he said the re-roof replacement was between $130,000 and $150,000. So.
And the repair was how much?
The repair, he, I just got the invoice. And I think it was, his bid was for $3,000 plus or minus. And the invoice came in around $1,800, I believe. It was significantly less than what he had quoted.
Nice.
And I am just going to ask Kevin to go up and take a look because, just to see what, you know, how it looks up there.
Yeah.
The boiler replacement work began last week. I think it's probably going to be another week or so before it's all complete. I attached in your documents a complaint letter from a resident that has, I did talk to Tony Belanger and he said that that has, he referred the resident to the police department for handling. Next week, or not next week, but on April 20th, you've got the meeting with Standard Power regarding community power. You had gotten that information prior. And then finally, just wanted to mention to you that we did meet with Kevin Russell from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Let's say a week ago, Tim, Leanne and Kevin and I, this is following up on Caleb Hill, now that it passed town meeting. We circled back with Kevin to find out what the next steps are. If you recall, the three of, or the four of us had, there was a lot of work done before when Joyce was the town administrator and there, she had gotten five bids from five different engineering firms. The four of us went through those, picked the three that we thought we wanted to bring back and interview. We did that. They gave us all the information about their qualifications because that's one of the steps that you have to do with the state. But at this point, I'm checking with you to see what you want to do in terms of the process going forward because we need to make a recommendation to DOT about which engineering firm we think we want to do the study and why we chose that engineering firm. The four of us have settled on one engineering firm. I believe you all got copies of that way back when we did that work. But I don't know if any of the board members want to be involved in reviewing those three again and weighing in? Or if any one of the board members wants to be involved in the process with the engineering firm or engineering firms, if, or if you want to interview either of the three? Just trying to, just checking in to see where you want to go.
Good.
So you look for the board's approval of one of the three?
So what, I guess I'm looking for direction from the board about how much you want to be involved or not involved in the process. At this point, we had selected a year or so ago, three engineering firms that we brought back and talked to about their qualifications. So it was the, the five to begin with, this started way back with Joyce, was McFarland, Johnson, DuBois and King, Underwood Engineering, HEB Engineers and CLD, Fuss and O'Neal. We brought back, Kevin, Tim, Leanne and I brought back, we looked at all the, the documents. We asked McFarland, Johnson, DuBois and King and Underwood Engineering to come back. We interviewed them, went through their qualifications. Went through their qualifications. And got information from them. Then we thought, okay, which one do we think is the best one based on what we heard? And then it stopped there because the next step was a hundred thousand dollars that we were going to have to come up with. Which is why everything stopped until we went to town meeting and got the approval of the legislative body. To give a hundred thousand dollars. It'll come back to us, but we have to pay it up front. So that's where we're at right now.
So there's a recommendation of one of those three and we're asking for us to approve that.
Right.
Yeah.
We have a recommendation of who we think it should be, but that was just the four of us. That was the direction we'd gotten before. I'm just checking in with the board now to see. Before we move forward, does anyone want to be involved in it? Do you want to look at all three of the? Qualifications?
I'd like to see the three qualifications.
That's fine.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll take a look.
And you had gotten all that before?
Yeah, has any of them, that was a year and a half ago, two years?
None, it was about a year ago.
About a year.
It was just about a year ago. It seemed like a long time ago. Is there any changes that they, any of them would like to make or?
No, because this is just on their qualifications of, that they meet the, the criteria to do the study. It's not actually the engineering study, so.
If any, any of their circumstances change, but yeah.
Then I'll, I'll just get copies made and everybody can get, do you want to see all five or do you want to see the three that we picked? And the three that we interviewed?
The three works for me.
Three is fine with me.
I'm good with the three.
I don't care. I'm, I'm not an engineer.
Oh, you probably want a hard copy.
We can get hard copies.
I mean, I can review it online, save some trees.
You can send it to me electronically, it can't be that long. Some of them are that long-winded.
Oh, yeah. And that's why I was saying, save the work.
Send it to me electronically, I can skip through it.
I'm good at electronic. I don't know if anybody else was.
That's all I have unless you have anything. Any questions?
Why are we surveying Mechanic Street? I mean Morrison.
As they, they're reading on the road.
We've read down the road for decades. Why all of a sudden we're surveying?
Okay, here's.
That's the street you live on.
No, I live on Main Street.
Oh.
I have utilities or anything like that. So what happened is back in around two thousand five, they had done, they, they've been recoding it, recoding it.
I know.
Last year they had, it was fourteen breaks in the water main. I burned the pipe. It's rusted, it's only that big on the inside. And so they have to do the water in all the pipes and everything. And along with it, we've had for a couple of years, a couple of residents complaining as to where they can park and how close the road, where the boundary actually is. And doing that, so if we're going to completely regrade the road, grind it up, put new pipes in. Now be the time to straighten out exactly where that road is. Where the houses are in relation to it, because they're going to put new pavement down.
I still don't understand why you would have it surveyed.
Well, where would you locate the road?
Where would I locate the road where it's always been, where the boundaries are? It's prescriptive, it's, it is where it is. In fact, that was a subdivision. I've seen the subdivision plan for that road.
What are we talking about down there?
Morrison Avenue.
Morrison Avenue?
So if anybody else, I.
But I was just curious, you're already.
It was, we.
You're already having it done, I'm not going to do anything to stop it, but I just.
We had quite a few. Non-publics over.
Well, I had been my tenure previously and, yeah, we, yeah, some of them were public.
Public, non-public, and to finally establish where.
Moving right along.
Our right of way is.
Do we have any interest from the public? Anyone want to say anything? Yep. If you want to stand up and talk through the mic, you, you're welcome.
All right, Dennis Manning, Caleb Hill Road. I guess because of a, you know. Discussion we had prior to on, not on the record, I'll ask a couple of questions first. What exactly is the status of the property on Sandburn Road adjacent to the police department? What is, I understand that that property was given to us, we bought it or something from the Diocese of Manchester, is that correct? And what are the limitations for that? I understand it's for municipal use only. Do we have any restrictions as far as selling it? Leasing it? Et cetera?
The town, the town purchased it, the town of Tilton owns it.
Right, but I'm.
Restrictions, we have.
Well, there are a few restrictions, we can't have like a porn site on it or something like that. Right.
That's to be used for municipal use. Well, the board of selectmen did promise that there would be. A game field there, but.
Okay.
Well, the property has been turned over to the parks department, so I don't know what their plan is right now. I'm doing a meeting Monday night.
But to, to answer, to answer your question, it was purchased in a five, five and a half, five point five acre. And we used two and a half acres for the police district.
So there's roughly three acres there, it belongs to the town of Tilton with the limitations of municipal use, correct?
There are some. Limitations in the deed.
Okay. Now, I would like to also ask, has this body, previous, current, ever discussed the desire to. Obtain Center Street Station if the fire district ever moved out of there?
In a public session with the, the commissioners. There was a discussion with the commissioners. On how they wanted to move forward with the. Fire station. And that would we entertain? Negotiating. The Sandborne Road property. And possibly. Center Street was involved in kind of sort of a swap.
Okay.
But however. The commissioners and I think you can watch that video. Were not all in agreement.
Right, okay, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here tonight, I understand, I mean, I have other concerns that really is not. This, this board is not at fault of anything, that's why I'm not where, I think you guys know kind of where I'm going anyway, but I just wanted to ask those questions. Because I'm not speaking, first off, I want to let you guys know, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Tilton Northfield Fire Facilities Committee. Even though I'm on that committee, I'm not speaking on behalf of them, I'm speaking tonight as a concerned citizen of Tilton. And unfortunately, I, I dropped the ball in, when I left as a commissioner and from the budget committee a few years ago. I didn't pay attention to what was going on. And since I had left, there was a new, I think in two thousand nineteen, they formulated a new facilities committee. I was commissioner representative to the one that we did back in sixteen seventeen. And we presented the Tilton School property with that project, if you all might be, somebody might be familiar with it. That was probably done on arrival anyway, for various reasons, but since then. We, obviously, we had a couple of new, different boards of commissioners for the fire, the fire district. And they, they assembled this new fire facility committee. And they, the, that, the, the old board of commissioners charged that facilities committee. With researching only the Park Street Station as a viable replacement to the Center Street Station. Now, the reason I am vehemently against that is because when we did our study, I'll go back to the study we did. Our focus was based upon call data and emergency response times. And again, when you draw the, they established radiuses from Center Street, radiuses from Exit Twenty. Radius is from the current Park Street location and they come up with all these numbers, so. Bottom line is, you've got about forty-two percent of the calls within the one mile district from Center Street. About another thirty-eight percent of the calls within the one mile radius of Exit Twenty. And a lion's share of these calls, you know, between sixty and seventy percent of those calls lie on this side of the One of Psaki River. Coupled by the fact that if I'm not mistaken, Tilton pays between sixty, seventy percent of the fire district budget, okay? My, my problem with that is, I, I fear as a Tilton resident that we are going to be, we are at jeopardy of losing our fire and EMS services. We're not going to lose them in, in, in total, but just doing a, just a quick thing, you know, a study of my own. Went down to the fire station, drove both routes, Summer Street from the Park Street Station. Park Street from the Park Street Station to the lights and the stop sign over here, it's, it's, they're both eight tenths of a mile. Summer Street is a, is two minutes. And it was one minute, that was thirty-five miles an hour, no traffic, I was good to go, okay? But that doesn't take into account, you come to a stop at the stop sign, generally two to three to four cars deep on the bridge. Emergency vehicles aren't going to get out of there any quicker, so I say this only because you're looking at a minimum of one minute to three or. More minutes added to call, call response times, especially when you start going out to the East Tilton area. It's my recommendation to the, to this board here that I, it, well, let me back up a little bit. I think someone said that you all have a non-public with the commissioners around April twentieth, is that, you're going to do that, okay? I don't know if the chief had reached out to you when we sat in our meeting, he was supposed to reach out to you, said something up beautiful. We have, I'll just say that we, we have a more open-minded board of commissioners now. So hopefully you guys can work something out, I mean, I urge you as a citizen or a resident of Tilton. Please do whatever you can to get that Sandman, Sandman Road property into the discussion. I was a little, I was concerned on Tuesday night when we made the presentation of our recommended, we, as the, the facilities committee, we met with all these. The contractors, the last thing we did was the interview, we graded them, we submitted a, a recommendation to the board of commissioners on Tuesday night formally. They accepted our recommendation and they're going to move forward with it, they're going to send out. You know, the, the notices of, of acceptance and so forth. And we're hoping to hear back from them, but. Members of the facilities committee stated that they do not want any space needs studies going on at the Sandman Road. It will only be geared towards Park Street because that was what was in the original R F Q. Again, that, that leaves us out in the cold a little bit, I believe. So the, the mindset, just to give you guys an update, the mindset is, we don't want to do anything with Sandman Road unless there's, unless we own it. Or there's a possibility we own it, or however you guys work it out. There was a recommendation that Tilton sell it to the committee, to the commission for, or the district, I should say. At market value, and that's why I was asking about the Center Street stuff. I, I have an idea about that, I just think that member was looking for. A way to jack the price up the expense of getting a new fire station and putting it out of the realm of people's willingness to vote for it. That's my personal opinion, but it seems to make sense to me. Don't really know what more to say on that, again, I can't emphasize enough my concern with us losing our, our response times. We have a great fire department, we have great people that work there, they do us a hell of a service and I'd hate to see that impacted simply because. We've pushed them a mile away from where their greatest numbers of business are. So, thank you guys very much for hearing me and I, I hope you guys really do some, some good bargaining and negotiating.
That's great information, thanks Dennis. Appreciate it. Anyone else with the public, from the public? No? I, I'll take up mine next week, I don't, I think we've got some time, I was going to go into non-public, but we'll just do it non-public for the next week. It's about a resident. Anyone, anything else to come before us? In a public meeting, before I look at Joe one more time? Hey, look at.
Well, if you call on me, we. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.